Planning and zoning and building committee, everybody take your seats please.
He's calling it dark. Commits to kill off.
Roll call please.
Thank you. Alderman Art Woods.
Mayor!
Say what's going on?
Alderman Currielli.
Here.
Alderman Messina.
Here.
Alderman Jacob.
Here.
Alderman Sismarski. Not here. Alderman Ames.
Here.
Alderman Artie Woods.
Here.
And Alderman Catalano.
Here, we have a quorum. Next, I need approval of the minutes of April 25th, 2024.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Any corrections to the minutes? If there are none, all in favor say.
Aye.
Motion carries. Important recommendation. Additional public benches for the clock tower and metro station. Take it away, Director.
Thank you Chairman Catalano. So, the first item on the PZB agenda tonight is related to some additional public benches that were recommended by the Streetscape Committee. This was originally brought to the committee because there was a public art grant available and we wanted to know, hey, are you interested in a program where we, you know, have a few of these painted? You could do it through a design program with the schools. We could, you know, curate artists, that type of thing, because there was a grant available. So they discussed that at one meeting. Actually, what happened is they discussed it over three meetings. At another meeting, they refined the scope of work. There was some concerns about durability of the paint and how long these would last. So, they considered eliminating the art portion and really just looking at the benches. This is the product that the committee is recommending we move forward with. They're constructed of recycled plastic. We have run this by the Public Works Department and they are fine with this product. And the committee also discussed a number of locations for these public benches. We gave them a map of all of the city-owned land in Wooddale and they really focused on the libraries, City Hall, and some other city-owned sites, rather than trying to acquire any property or get any types of easements. What they ended up doing was focusing on the metro station and the clock tower plaza. So, they are recommending two benches at each location. You can see where these would be with the yellow dots. There is an option to include these personalized cast-in-bronze plaques on the benches. If the city were interested in doing that, or the committee, the cost would be $635 for, one for each of the benches. We could also not move forward with that portion of it. So, at the April 1st meeting, the committee voted four to one, resulting in a recommendation for approval for the purchase of these public benches. And that is all.
Okay. Any questions? Alderman Woods, did you have a question?
Where's my head? Well, I have a couple things, so. Back when I was on Streetscape a while back, I think. Peter was on and maybe Randy at the same time, but he went over when we were doing the signage for the city, the street signs and the wave light signs and the monument signs. We developed a piece and selected benches and garbage cans and a couple other things that would go along with any project. So it was kind of like our street code, you know, if you do a street, this is what you do. But this was the same thing. So if you're going to put in a bench, you put in a bench and at that time the black ones, because we always started with the black ones and then to the sign, so. For me, my suggestion would be to the black ones. I don't know if we need the Wooddale Punch-Out in the back. Do you remember that?
Don't think I was on about the benches, then the signs, maybe you might have been on for the benches.
Go ahead, Alderman Messina.
I was on the tree that I was, that we talked about. I think the whole theme was continuity.
Right. And so another, so that was one, as far as the design questions. The other one, we had a Lions Club meeting last night and we, over the years, have been trying to get a program together to put out benches and be sponsor them. So, I don't know if we'll sell the fish or the night supplies, whether we'd like to participate and fund part of the purchase, depending on how many benches and the door we get. So, that will be all done. But I'll make a motion to approve the black benches. Again, I think that you guys would have to go look at those.
Yeah, so, we're talking about $1,789 for one bench, for the black ones?
Yeah.
No. Go ahead, Mayor. So, that's for two benches, but what's the cost of the black ones for the motion?
I do not know.
Seventeen eighty-nine.
No, that's these.
No, it's in the packet.
It's in the packet though.
Missing it? Oh, oh, same. No, that's each though.
Right.
Well, that's with the name.
Yeah.
So, if we don't have the name, would that change the price?
Yes.
Okay. So. Go ahead, Mayor. Just so we're clear, so, we're talking about four benches, but that was, this one you guys talking about, seventeen eighty-nine with the Wooddale printed on there, each, correct? So, just for motion sake.
Yes, I don't know that we need the Wooddale Punch-Out, which is probably what's driving the cost to almost eighteen hundred dollars, I think, just playing black.
Go ahead, Mayor. And we can get the prices for next week, right?
As I said, maybe we could look into that. Peter's.
Alderman Jacob, go ahead.
Yes, I know part of our thing is, and we did like the black ones, but part of the things is Public Works said, these are easier to maintain. And then we also talked about the cost and I mean, we're, as you know, Streetscape's on a very limited budget, so we want to get as many benches as possible. So I think that's one of the reasons that led us to these. Because if I'm not mistaken, that's out of our budget, is that not correct?
Stacy? Go ahead.
There is a line item budget for the committee and I think it might be $10,000. It is not. The Finance Director would have to.
The Lions Club is going to help you.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, but I'm just saying, well, part of the reason we went with this. And we also talked about having more throughout the town, even like in, maybe having each ward pick a couple spots to have some benches down the road as well.
Mayor, go ahead. Just to follow up, so, we have one of those black ones already, right? I'm just curious, do we, as far as maintenance, do they rust? Do we got to keep painting them? I'm just curious.
I think their color color.
I don't know, it's, well, again, they get scratched, whatever, I'm just curious. Director Lang, go ahead.
Yeah, you know, anything eventually that's metal or painted is going to chip or rust, but, you know, anything can also be re-touch in the future. Don't let me stop you from getting the benches that you want.
No, and these, these can get damaged also, so I'm just, I just wanted to hear how it was going. And also, as far as location, are we going to put any at the memorial, the Veterans' Memorial? Because I'd like to see one over there. Okay?
We could bring it back to the committee with, and request, you know.
And did garbage cans go along with all these benches? Because you know we're going to have issues with garbage. Alderman Ames, go ahead.
So the black benches that we currently have, are they the ones with the Wooddale Punch-Out or just black?
They are not. And we can, before the next meeting, we can find out how much those were to purchase and bring that information forward.
Okay.
And check the budget amount.
So if we go with a bench that does not have the Wooddale cutout and there was a picture on there of like a plaque that somebody could purchase to add on, like maybe a dedication plaque, or if the organization wanted to sponsor a bench, could they purchase that?
Yep.
Right. I mean, to not maybe buy the whole bench, but if they wanted to get the plaque, you know, similar to, you know, people dedicating trees and having a plaque. So is that possible to do also?
All of these things are possibilities. There's no reason we couldn't do that.
Are we going to have enough time to bring it up for next week, in one week? With all these changes? I'm sorry? Go ahead, Mayor. All you need is the price and, and I was going to ask, Art, did you make the motion? I didn't, I didn't get a second, I want, just making sure.
Well, I would second it.
Yes? The black, the black? Okay. And could you include a motion in that to put one of the Veterans Park? Would you agree to that, the motion? We can always do that. Okay.
I think we could cycle them out, based on some of the conversation we're having, some of the comments up here and down. We want more of us benches, get more locations. We could reach outside of groups or people.
Okay.
To co-sponsor some of the benches too. So I think we could kind of put some program together.
Sounds good. Alderman Jacob?
Yeah, Dr. Springer, I, if you could, when you're looking on the metal ones, some of the parks buy them and they're, I think they're called Plastisol. So it's like a metal bench, but it's got like a plast, it's not really a coating, it's actually like a rubber plastic on it. And I think they're about the same price and I think those would last longer than just the metal ones, because those don't rust. Like I say, I think they're called Plastisol.
I'm happy to work with Director Lang and look into those types of things. And Director Wilson just informed me that he believes the budget to be $4,000 or $5,000.
That's all?
That's, that's what I recall, that's why we.
That's for the first six months of the year.
That's one of the reasons we decided to not go with the metal ones, unfortunately. So we could get them done.
Alderman Ames?
Well, I guess that my question was now a little different now that we know the budget, because I was going to say if we purchased more benches, sometimes you get a better break on the price if, you know, you buy more. And does that include installation of the benches with whoever we buy them from, or do we install them?
It includes delivery. Public Works would install the benches.
Okay. I just wanted to know if there was extra charges besides what's listed there.
Alderman, Alderman Jacob?
Yeah, not sure where this would come up, but I think we should increase that budget from 4,000 to maybe like 10 or something at some point.
Kind of limited what you could do with that.
Okay, so Alderman Woods, I mean, yeah.
Yeah, I was just going to say, there's one of the most recent road projects completed under budget. We always have projects under budget that magically have a couple dollars. If it falls free, maybe you can bring those to your.
We got a motion and a second. Yeah, we got a motion and we got a second. And a second, yeah. So roll call please.
Alderman Art Woods.
Yes.
Alderman Currielli.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Ames.
Yes.
Alderman Artie Woods.
Yes.
And Alderman Catalano.
Yes, and motion carries. Okay, next is the memorandum of understanding with Holiday Properties for the redevelopment for 372 North Wooddale Road.
Thank you Chairman Catalano. I did want a little bit of a follow-up on the benches. We have to turn that around by tomorrow morning in order to get it on the next City Council agenda, so I just wanted to let you know that it won't be coming next week. We have a little bit of work to do.
Okay. That's fine.
Great. Here we go. I am really excited to talk about this project. All right. Thank you Chairman. Get my. So, I am here this evening to introduce you to the team from Holiday Development who is interested in moving forward with the construction of apartments at 372 North Wooddale Road on the former SVT property next door. You're going to hear from them in just a little bit. I am going to give you some teaser information upfront and I'm going to hand it over to them to provide kind of the shiny pictures and explain who they are, what they've done, and how they're going to move forward. They are looking at, I think we're all familiar with the location of the site. The building has been taken down. And as the City Council remembers, we have been working on apartment construction here for the last several years in order to spur economic development. The idea is more residents in this area will patronize our local commercial businesses and make them stronger. It will bring or spur development of additional types of commercial development is what we hope. And this is also a product that we really don't have here in Wooddale, these higher-end new apartment dwellings which are in high demand. So back in 2020, I think you might remember, there were four apartment buildings proposed by InterContinental which did not move forward. In 22, the Linmart Group came before us, but unfortunately, due to rising construction costs and financing costs post the beginning of the pandemic, they were unable to move forward. We were hopeful that JSP last year was going to move forward with a similar project, but they ultimately did not move forward with an application due to the high financing costs and interest rates. So Holiday Properties, and again, I'm going to let Drew Mitchell walk you through a little bit about their company, but they've been established since 1952. They've completed a number of similar developments here in DuPage County and they are excited to move forward with the project. They are proposing something similar to the last two interested developers, a single building about four stories tall. It will hover around 150 rental units. The prior project was about 180. But they are proposing some minor modifications, which I think are enhancements for the project. Some cutting edge amenities, some enclosed parking on the site, which I think is in demand for some of these newer type developments. And since there is a pool next door and pools are high maintenance and only really available part of the year, they are proposing elimination of that in favor of some highly amenitized outdoor space. Their potential schedule is that they would submit complete applications with all documentation by August 1st of this year. And we would hope that the approval of all the entitlements and the RDA would happen by the end of the year. After that, they would apply for building permits and so at the latest, site development would start September 1st of next year and development will be complete no later than two years later. I mean, these things usually take about 18 months, but you know, this gives a window for, you know, anything to happen. The memorandum of understanding is why we're here this evening. The terms of the MOU is, are, it's valid for one year and it's a non-binding agreement. And it really lays out the standards and outlines the responsibilities of the party so that we have a basis with which to create the redevelopment agreement. The redevelopment agreement and the purchase and sale agreement are things that come towards the end of the entitlement process. Once we have site plans, we know concrete details, we have financing, we need a pro forma in order to determine the TIF contribution. So there's a lot of things that need to happen before we can enter into this ironclad, you know, binding agreement towards the end of the year. So this MOU gives the developer comfort in knowing we're all on the same page, this is where we're headed, we're going to go ahead and release and spend $250,000 or more on plan preparations to get us to the end of the year. That's a pretty big jump for a company to do and so they are looking for some assurance that we're all headed in the same direction. And so staff is recommending approval of the MOU. The draft is included in your packet and of course, it would be subject to final legal review by our city attorney in case there are some additional tweaks necessary. At this time, I would love to turn over the presentation to Drew Mitchell. He is a partner at Holiday and the Senior Vice President of Development. And Drew, I will pull up your presentation. All right.
Thank you Stacy. Good evening. I'm going to try to not use the word village tonight and I know we're a city here, but we're really excited to be here. Hello Mayor, hello Alderman. Stacy, it's nice to see you again. We got to know Stacy and her experience in Glen Allen and she's a consummate professional and she's one of the main reasons actually why we're here today, is a phone call that we got from Stacy. I'm also joined by Mike Doyle. He's an associate at Holiday. And then the third gentleman is Mike O'Connor, he's also my partner. We come kind of as a team, we work on projects together. And then the gentleman in the middle is Chris Walsh. Chris is an architect with Tandem Architecture. They've done great projects throughout Chicagoland and you'll have a chance to see some of the buildings that they designed with Holiday today. I'm long-winded, so cough loud if I'm, you know, taking too long on something, Stacy, I hope to not scare anybody right now, because these are, tend to be a big process to get through these and there's multiple meetings. So, quick background, Holiday Properties, we're based in South Bend, Indiana. We are, it says you're a fully integrated real estate company. What that means to us is that we have capability from ground up, inception, visioning, we have architects on staff, even though we prefer to work with Chris and work with outside architects. We've got capability for property management through construction. People love to live in our buildings. We've developed a reputation particularly in DuPage County for transit-oriented development projects and it's really what we love to do. And there's a lot of reasons for that, but we have a variety of different, we're involved in a variety of different asset classes. If you've driven to Detroit, you go by a Bass Pro Shop, that's a 400-acre business park that we built. There's 4,000 people going to work right now, not maybe too dissimilar from a Hamilton Lakes. We have offices in Nashville, Indianapolis, South Bend, Richmond, Orlando, Savannah, Georgia, and then in DuPage County, Clarendon Hills is where we're based. Depending on where you are, you might have a different feeling of what Holiday is in Indiana, we're a master planned business park developer. In Illinois, we are known for our luxury suburban downtown train station oriented product. It's what we do, it's what this team does. Our mission, we take it seriously, it's enriching lives for investment service. Mike, what week is it this week? It's Service Week, so we've been volunteering all week at different charities. I don't mean to get into all that, but we're real humans, we're good people, we tell the truth and we do what we say we're going to do. And that can't always be said for the development community. I live in DuPage County and we think we're on to something. There is a massive, just acute shortage of housing and it's not unique necessarily to DuPage County and to Wooddale. It's a problem across the country and we're seeing this fascinating sort of change in behavior. And there's several things driving it. One is students at college, they are living in the nicest student housing you could imagine and they're graduating and their expectations for their accommodations are elevated from, you know, maybe the animal house you might have had if you were in school. At the same time, there was a tax cap that was passed several years ago, which limited the deductibility of your taxes as a homeowner and landlords don't have that same, we're able to deduct fully our taxes. So the tipping point has actually changed for where it makes sense to rent versus own. And it's one of the drivers for why you're seeing a lot of luxury apartment products and fewer condos. And there's more reasons that we could get into about why that is, from financeability, et cetera. So, would you jump Stacy to the next slide, just because otherwise I'll just keep talking? But this on the screen is an example of a project that we built in downtown Downers Grove. It opened, we started envisioning it in May of 2015. We're trying to show you that, you know, a lot of times the renderings don't really end up being what you get. And so there's, there's a sequence of projects you're going to see here that show that we do what we're going to, what we say we're going to do. This was a building that was on the west, is on the western edge of downtown Downers Grove. The train line flanks to the north and the downtown con plan called for a terminating vista. Really what they wanted was a piece of art to frame the western edge of their downtown, lend itself to pedestrian safety, feeling like you're enclosing the downtown and it's been full ever since. This is one of the top three rated apartment buildings in the state of Illinois, based on online user reviews. Usually people writing stuff online aren't happy, so we're really proud of that. And we've had a waitlist ever since we opened, I probably said that three times. But anyway, so, the next project, yeah, go ahead. Sorry, and this, hopefully conversational here, please.
Alderman Messina, go ahead.
Go back to voting for it.
Yeah, you bet.
I'm for voting that building.
Are you?
It's right by Starbucks.
Yes!
Yeah, and they think the library.
Yeah, the library is just southeast, that's exactly right.
Our picture in our packet looks different, so I thought it was a different development in Downers. So that is the actual picture.
And well, and the picture in your packet is the same building? It's a perspective looking northwest, we did a rounded corner. And so you don't totally appreciate it, but here's what you're not seeing, just CMU block on CMU block. There's a lot of accoutrements and fancy, you know, and even like, is the clock here? Rats! So, all of these buildings, we're paying homage to something and we try to give them life. We want these buildings to be, to feel vibrant. We want people to feel like, you know, they're at home and not in a structure. And so in the clock, I was hoping it was up here, we shipped from London, it was overlooking, there was a monument overlooking the, sorry. It was, the clock hung in a building overlooking the monument to the Great Fire of London and we shipped it here, installed it on the building, inserted a plaque, told the story and plugged it in and it didn't work right because their electricity is a little different. But we ended up getting it all working right. The one in Lombard, we'll see in a little bit, was on the site of the former DuPage Theater. And we initiated an effort to salvage the old ticket booth that was in the building. These medallions go back one, these medallions were, they adorned the old theater and we found them in the Historical Society's garden, the stepping stones. We took them out, took a mold and recreated these medallions and put them on our building. And there's a bunch of really neat stuff. You go in there, there's a picture of the Yellow Lily, which was the first movie that played in 1926 when the theater opened. So, we just aren't in here to build something and leave. And that's our competition, they're merchant builders. They build, they get an annuity, they create a, you know, it looks like a bond to a buyer and then they leave town. And that's just not Holiday. We are long-term owners of our real estate, we're a family-owned company, our employees are investing in our projects. And all of this changes the whole DNA of the building and the calculus of how we go about building it. We are future-proofing these buildings, we're bringing fiber optic often all the way to the unit, things like, you know, we put in EV charging capacity in Burlington Station in 2018, before anybody was saying that, you know, you have to do this. So, there are just some kind of real quick that, things that we did before we came here today. One was talking to our trusted market study consultant, Tracy Cross and Associates. One was talking to our trusted market study consultant, Tracy Cross and Associates. We said, tell us about Wooddale. Tell us, look at this site with us, and what do you think? And they came back and they said, Drew, we like it. You know, let's get serious on this. That was number one. The second was, our biggest lender in these suburban transit-oriented developments has been Wintrust, and they're right here in town, they can see the site, and they're very interested in financing this. So the money's there. The next part of this is, I skipped all the, let me, I'll quickly go back.
Okay.
All right. Quincy Station, downtown Westmont, a little bit of a blue-collar community, downtown reasonably vibrant, really had a desire to introduce more disposable income, and walking residents who would then be patrons at these businesses. When we showed up in Westmont, there were 33 commercial vacancies downtown, there's like three or four now. It's exciting what's happening there, we're thrilled to be a part of it, it's showing the power of what tax increment financing can do, because you're looking at something that if they didn't have it, this project wouldn't have happened. And then now they're moving into the next phase, and they want to do another project in their downtown, and it's just really, like, I'm going to use this phrase again, it just feels vibrant. And so we take great pride in being a part of the rising tide that's lifting the ships. So this one has been hard. This is Glen Allen, where Stacy put us through the wringer, and it's 86 units. We are the fourth developer to try to get this site going. It's been hard. I mean, I don't even know where to start. From tiebacks and license agreements with our neighbor, we're in a valley here, and so we had to purchase these, it's been tricky, but we found us out some of these things, like the naturally occurring glacial boulders, it cost a million bucks for us to remove, and some were as big as that table, and we just kept going. And so it's, there's a variety of units in this that are really appealing to the two primary demographics that live in this building. There's about 40 to 45% of people in our TODs are downsizing empty nesters. They may have never imagined that they would rent again, and all of a sudden they have this low-maintenance, very nice option, and they might be in Florida for a couple months, but their grandkids are here. And so they, and they often are our remonstrators in public hearings, and then you find them in our building afterwards because they get it, the light bulb goes off. So that's about half of them. And we design these units differently for them, and we design them differently from our competition. It includes things like, you know, when you're downsizing, you need more, you have a need for more storage. And people are skipping the laundry rooms, and in your kitchen, there's a door, and it's a stacked washer dryer, and your laundry basket's in your kitchen reminding you how much laundry you have to do, always. We don't do that, we dedicate the laundry room space, so we build them differently. And this is, by the way, why we go to our market study consultant, because they get our product, they understand what we're building. All right, Stacy, I'm doing, I know I'm going too long. The next demographic is really, they used to say millennials, but it's almost Gen Z. They are pre-household formation, they might be dating, maybe, he works at Navistar and she's a nurse in the city. Or it's, they're not in love yet, it's just a young professional typically. We have accessible housing, we include studio units as well in our buildings, and so that represents kind of the other half. And then there's a remaining 10%, which are kind of hard to identify. They're, you know, it's a divorced dad who's, the wife maybe kept the house, and he wants to be in the school district and things like that. So, okay. With that, oh, and then Itasca Station. So we're pretty pregnant right down the street with the site. We're a couple years into this project. The challenges have been numerous from, it's all downtown Itasca's wet, but we finally have navigated the entitlement process, we've got our PUD figured out, we closed on the land in September, September 1st-ish, and then we're launching. And we view this opportunity with Wooddale to really follow on the heels of that. We're properly capitalized to do the project, and we're falling in love with Wooddale. So with that, I guess I'll turn it over to Chris Walsh from Tandem to describe the product that we're proposing here, and we are eager for feedback, too.
These are never perfect the first time you do it. Thank you, thank you very much.
How you doing? So Drew had mentioned, there were, and there was a slide, there were former developers. We think, as Drew said, we've actually come into different communities and figured these out. We've been the third and fourth people. This team really knows how to get into the numbers, figure out the way, you know, some of these projects can work. On this site, when we looked at it, it was a U-shaped building. First of all, we turned it south because we want the sun to kind of shine into the U. That's something we found on other projects where, the old one, they'd actually turned it the other way. Pools are very expensive, as Stacy had pointed out, that wouldn't be something that we would see on this, so again, this would be, helps with all these things, we can take those dollars and put them into other things. Another thing is the detention system that they had, they had underground under parking. We've actually reduced the amount of units so we could pull back some of the parking and create a, an open-air detention area, which will be more economical, and it's actually more pleasant for the site, and it just helps everybody out. So it may seem the same as maybe something you've seen before, but it actually, these slight little tweaks that we've learned over the years that can actually make a project work, and it may not sound like a lot, but those little things that, those little tweaks will make it work. And this team really, this is a nice-sized building for them, they can amenitize it, they can have staff and all that, where it's the right size. The unit mix comes from Tracy Cross, as Drew had mentioned. I'm not going to bore you and go through each one, but it is a mix of studios, one-bedrooms, one-plus dens, two-bedrooms, and there is a three-bedroom, three-bedrooms as well. So from the, from our professional, we feel that this would hit the market here and what everyone's looking for. And as Drew had mentioned, you're really trying to catch the younger crowd coming in, you want to get those people who are going to buy your house later. You want that next generation to come into the town and find their doctor here, find the grocery store, they get used to the community, they love the community. Maybe they have their kids already, and they get into the schools, and now they want to buy the house, and it's really generates that next group of people to come into. And then you also get the other end of it, and that's typically the buyer, it's either the people coming in, or it's the people who want to stay here, they love the town, and they have nowhere to go, they, you know, but they don't want to keep up the house. So they end up moving into these communities. And what we have, typically what we have is a fitness room, this would have outdoor amenities that we still have to kind of figure out what the best amenities are, but pickleball court, dog walk area, outdoor space, fire pits, things like that are very common, a clubhouse, somewhere you can hang out, maybe rent a space if you're going to have a family party and you can't fit them all in your apartment. And we do just try to make special spaces, you know, we'll play around with, this actually has a little outdoor space at the front, maybe there's some trails and things like that.
Could just real quick on the units, we typically have 14 to 18 different unit types in our building. That's very unusual. What you often see is like a breezeway product with all two bedrooms in this building, and they're all identical, and all one-bedrooms in this building, and they're all identical. We have work-from-home spaces in our units and things like that. So there's a lot that goes in, and it's very hard for the leasing concierge when they're doing a tour to know every unit is priced differently based on premiums, and all of the units have access to the outdoors. We insist on that. I, the pool, I hate pools, I think they don't make sense in Chicago. We have an extraordinary municipal asset immediately to the west, and I would much rather put the money into something that people can enjoy year-round. Stacy asked us to try to keep this short, but we have great pictures, or we'd love to have you come see a building. The Downers Grove building has an extraordinary amenity deck. That's what we're imagining here. And we really, this turning to U, we're trying to open it up to town. We want the train going by, people to see this, we want cars go, so there's a lot, this is not in elevation yet, and we aren't there yet, but we put in expensive materials. This is going to be a gorgeous building. So can you tell I take pride in this? I mean, we really do. Okay, those are the key, the key thing. And we have, by the way, we have about 20 hotels, they don't do very good usually. Hotels are tough, it's been a tough business with the pandemic, but we've brought this great hospitality experience into our buildings. And so Quincy Station in Westmont, you go in, it feels like a boutique hotel, and so it's informed by this experience that we have had in our, in the hotel environment. So I think we should probably wrap it up. You guys are maybe sick of me already, but we're excited to be here. Thank you so much for your attention. And Stacy, what do we do now? Questions?
You can have a seat, and they'll be asking us questions.
Holman Messina, go ahead.
I had a question. Kim's uncle, Westmont, can you bring them here?
Oh, the pizza?
Yeah. I'm also very familiar with the Quincy Station one as well. Daughter goes to class across the street, and I can, in the two and a half years that she's been going there, I can just see the evolution of what is happening on that strip. And Westmont, it is Wooddale. I mean, that strip, take, do yourself a favor and go down there. That is probably the most real, if we're being honest, the real closest to Wooddale is that, is Quincy Station. And what that did, two and a half years ago, to what do I see now? I mean, I just saw two more breakfast places the other day when I brought her there. Like, it's insane. So kudos to you guys, and hopefully we can drum up that same excitement here.
Oh, we can.
Go ahead. Any more questions? Holman Woods.
Can't let him get away with just one question. That wasn't even a question.
Yeah, comment, compliment.
A good comment, though, and so it's all exciting. Great company, great products out there. I built in Lombard, so I'm familiar with your stuff. I've built in, I'm familiar with the area that you're in. Actually, you probably owned a couple of those properties prior to you over there. But all that being said, the only, my big issue has been brought up. We've been on this roller coaster ride through three prior groups, all of varying degrees of talent and excitement, and at the end of the day, so far, nobody's followed through. So my big apprehension is giving any more time than is necessary to, let's say, put your feet to the fire. And so I look at the memo of understanding, right, and that's got a shelf life without extension of one year. And within that, you've worked with staff and the attorney and developed some kind of schedule or milestones to, you know, getting to the RDA, which is where we want to get to, right? That's where the rubber really meets the road, so to speak. And so my request, or my thing would be to, that we get the MOU to match up timeline to the RDA, right? I view it as if you're committing to this, why do we need the four months back end? If you came in and said you needed another week, nobody's going to say no up here. But to leave that shelf time on the back end, it's really unnecessary. I would like to say that we could move forward this agreement and just tighten up the MOU to be equal to the timeline of achieving the RDA.
I totally follow what you said. I do not necessarily disagree with any of it. It makes me think of my sister-in-law, who, you know, is not married yet, and she's dated a couple guys, and mom and dad are putting some real pressure on that, and it gets dicey. I mean, these are really hard projects to do, and the more you want, and I don't blame you for wanting something that's toothy, you can pull it away from us, but that's part of the fear. And already, I happen to end up in a business where if I screw up, they get to take my house because of personal guarantees. It sounds like you might be a builder or a developer, you may know something about that. And so I think that there's a couple things. First of all, today, in how, we're reading the room, and we're trying to figure out, we think we like this a lot, but we have to go, and we enter risk mode immediately after we approve a summary, we start spending a boatload of money, hundreds of thousands of dollars, and we don't know what can go wrong. You could start, we could do soil borings, we probably have them already, and we could find something. So I just, do I sound cagey? Do I sound like a politician? I don't mean to. I just would encourage there to be, this needs to be cooperative partnership, is how these are successful. And I've seen it where, you know, you got to perform by this date, and Murphy's Law shows up, and things can break apart. Part of the reason why we wanted to show you, here's where we were, and here's where we went with each of these projects, is to help you understand that we are the real deal. We get these done. And, but even in Glen Allen, we needed, we were trying to launch that, nobody knew a pandemic was coming. We had a piece of paper that said, if you don't start by this date, you got a problem. And they were, the municipality worked with us and worked through it, and these were unprecedented force majeure kind of things, but it was scary. And so all that I'm saying maybe is, Mike, do you want to answer this? He's probably quicker to play and won't talk about his sister-in-law, but, I mean, you bet, but just know that we're introducing actually more risk. The chance of us failing goes up, the more we require this really rigid schedule to be adhered to, because as you know, things goof up, and so.
The one thing I would add.
Yeah. Will you come out, Mike?
The one thing I would add, the way the MOU was written, it can be terminated by either party at a point in time. If the city wasn't satisfied at any point in time that we were making the right amount of progress and performing, you could pull it anyway. And so we're fine with whatever length you want to make it, but we just think that that's, what's drafted is reasonable, things do come up, and we all want to work together to get to the finish line. These things do take time, and I think the goal of an RDA complete by the end of the year is great. We'd love to do, make that happen, work together to make that happen, and if that's the case, then the MOU goes away at the end of the year. If it doesn't, if it moves along that quickly, and it takes a couple extra months, you know, we don't have to revisit the MOU. So, but we're fine either way. I mean, we're really interested in doing this with you, and, you know, I respect the question.
I do, too.
Go ahead, Holman Woods.
So, and I respect what you guys bring to the table, for sure. And you said all the right things, which leads me to believe that my suggestion is more doable.
The pictures of the renderings and then the photos, the dates were added for a reason. It's just to show, and, you know, every project has its list of hurdles that we had to get over to get them done, but they do take time, and, but we don't have a, if we put up a before-and-after shot of projects that we didn't do, it'd be pretty, it'd be short. We choose communities that want us, we don't try to put something where someone, in a community where, that we're not welcome, you know, try to shoehorn something in and do battle with a board and plant commission. We don't, we just don't do it. We try to align our interests with the vision of the community. The comprehensive plan is the first thing we look at. What do they want for their downtown? What do they want to see? And if we can, if we can come up with a product that aligns with that, and then just, things go much smoother. And so that's why our track record is strong, our batting average is high, so.
Holman Messina?
Yeah, I mean, it would be a tug-of-war all night, right? I'll give you the analogy of your sister-in-law. She's been engaged maybe three times, and they've walked out on her three times, maybe, no offense.
Yeah.
But, right?
That's where I was trying to go.
At some point, she's going to be very apprehensive, we are all very apprehensive that if we see red flags, I think maybe what, or at least what I'm saying is like, yeah, we'd probably be much faster, much quicker to pull that plug.
Yeah.
And it is either party. So I feel like with that being non-binding, I think you said in the beginning, and that for me was enough. It's scary, because obviously they could drop us, at the same time, we have that power now that we've learned some things from these relationships, that we'll see red flags and we will pull the plug, right? So I'm good with that, I understand. All right.
Very clever, you used my analogy against me.
Very clever you used my analogy against me. But I think you're absolutely right. And it is non-binding, and that is scary. And it's scary for both of us, because, you know, we launch into paying consultants right away. And so, but I also trust Stacy, just from our experience in navigating this gauntlet in Glen Allen. It was tricky, and we also have studied Wooddale. We know we need this. We know we've got a need for housing here, and we love being by the train. So I think it's just going to activate our downtown. And so, Alderman Woods, keep the pressure on us. It's healthy. It's good. But we've got to also all be human and reasonable, that, you know, things can go wrong. And we had a chance to meet the village attorney. I mean, it's actually the first community I had the village attorney introduce himself. These are things we like, you know, not the DMV and the windows closed. So we're here, we're here very deliberately. We don't, I don't like letting people down at all. It's like actually a problem of mine, but in a good way. So we won't let you down, and we'll get this thing done. But we need a chance. Normally, we say it's six months for entitlement, then six months for CDs. If you can, you do the RDA at the same time. And then we can probably beat that 24-month construction schedule, but that's been hard for us lately. I mean, we've had supply chain issues, and, you know, money got expensive, too. And so there's this phrase, "Time kills deals." Right now, it's healing deals a little bit. Like, we need a rate relief in June, probably, or September, and that might not happen. And I'm not saying this project is predicated upon some federal action at some point, but they're harder, they're a lot harder to do now. So, but I'm sorry, I hear you, though, and I think the answer for Mike was the right answer. We will agree to accelerated schedules so long as we have a chance to understand what we're agreeing to and know that we won't let you down.
Alderman Ames, you had a question?
Yes, I actually have a couple of questions about the property map itself, too. And first, I just wanted to say, I appreciate your enthusiasm about Wooddale. I think it's amazing that you're doing a lot of research and trying to make a building that's special to our community, whatever that might be compared to what you've done to other communities. So is there?
We're thinking about calling it the Frederick Lester Station. Does that mean anything to anybody? I'm sorry.
The pool? It was the swimming pool.
No, I'm sorry. I interrupted you.
No, no, that's, well, so is there a rendering of what this building will look like? I know we have a map here, but I don't, I see the other pictures from the other communities. Do we have what it looks like?
We do not have a rendering at this time.
Okay.
So part of our, those cost money, and they take a lot of time and energy, and you're picking facade materials, and it gets sticky, because we remember these images better than you're ever going to remember something like that. All of that required us being comfortable with the board, with the mayor, understanding the community a little bit better, seeing if this was filled with pitchforks here, because, you know, that can happen, too. Sometimes people are resistant to change, even if the outcome is good for them. They're resistant through the whole process. So come on up, Mike.
And one thing about the architecture, go back to Quincy, if we could.
Yep. Hold on.
These are shown as representative quality, I would say. So if you like the architecture of these projects, you'll like the architecture that we ultimately end up with in Wooddale. But this project received an award. Chris was the architect. It's, I can't remember, it's the Platinum Key Award for Chicago area for residential multifamily.
Yeah.
And, yeah.
And it won the Westmont Cornerstone Award.
So we're going to, you know, that, whenever Chris talks to me, what do you want the building to look like?
I want it to win awards.
I just, I'll know, I can't tell you what I want it to look like. I'll know it when I see it, though, and I want it to win an award.
And we know when we don't like it, too, by the way. And we want it to blend in with the community and fit with the fabric. Trustee Messina commented on the Downers Grove building. I mean, we studied the neighboring townhomes to the south, how it interacted with the residential nearby. These are, we take cues from it. And, you know, there's ways that we can bring Wooddale into the building and make this part, you know, yeah, I don't want to get too far ahead of myself yet, but we have some ideas, things that could be really fun here. So right now, sorry, trustee Ames, it's a little, Alderman Ames, it's a little dialed down, because all we're looking at is a site plan. But there would be renderings that would be forthcoming if we can agree on the MOU.
Is there going to be any storefronts in the bottom, or is it just going to be total apartments?
So we do not advise introducing commercial here. It's actually, this is something actually that happened in Downers Grove, where the community came and they said, we don't want commercial. We're trying to really preserve the walkability of our commercial corridor. We want the money. We want the people here that are spending. And so there are situations where, there's a parcel south and east of here that we looked at at one point, I hate to distract us from it, but, you know, that might have wanted commercial on the ground floor. This, I don't think it wants it here. And there's so much competition for the first floor. Trash, packages, getting our residents in and out, parking. And so you, yes, sir?
Alderman Jacob, go ahead.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry.
Sorry, I actually had a question for the attorney, for Pat. Pat, on this, on page, let's see here, 31 of the packet, where it talks about project incremental taxes, it talks about paying, like, first to fund the school and library, and then second, payments to the city. Wouldn't payments to the city go first, since it's the city's property?
Go ahead.
Yeah, you're talking, there's a cash-in lieu, is that, I don't know if that's a reference you're making it, they're making a cash, instead of providing land, they're giving the cash instead. There's a formula under the TIP Act for the eligible costs, and it's built in there that the city's going to get the reimbursement of the property, the cost of the acquisition of property, through the project increment, if you look at the next paragraph.
Okay. But how does the schools and the library come into that?
In terms of priority?
Yeah, in terms of priority. It says, like, first to fund mandatory annual school district and library payments, and then second to the city. So that's what I'm talking about, priority there.
I don't know.
I can, so it's set by statute that the student, the cost to educate the students in the building has to be paid first. And so they've requested, and we're repaying ourselves for the land out of the TIP. The first few years, though, it's hard to get these buildings established and up and running, occupied, so we're going to take our money on the tail end, just the first few years, and then we'll revert to getting the city money upfront.
Okay, thank you.
May I just add to that, because it's relevant on the student population generation? Remember the two demographics? When we see folks having babies in our building, they move. And Chris talked about the magic of homeowner incubation, creating a place for the Gen Zs to land, figuring out where their dentist is, their doctor, and then they buy homes in our communities. And so that, there's power to that. What the school district is concerned about is you bring 150 units and you have this increase in school generation, and where does it get paid for? So the way the TIP works is, it's, there's a frozen base, then you have the increment that's generated. It first goes to pay for any schoolchildren that are in our building. Then it goes to pay for the land, and then the remaining, and it has to be TIP, you're correct, it has to be TIP-eligible, reimbursable, TIP-eligible, reimbursable expenses. And then that comes to the developer. So that's, but I think that's what you're talking about, is that waterfall.
Alderman Artie Woods?
Thank you. Personally, I love everything I'm hearing, and I hope you guys are the ones that come through for us finally, like everyone else has said. My one question is, this is probably unique, that you guys have a big project going on right next door, and Itasca around the same timeframe.
Yeah.
Does that pose any kind of potential conflict or any hindrance on?
We're excited about that, and I'll tell you why. You saw a picture of Downers, and then you saw the picture of Quincy Station. And so we, all of our buildings have onsite staff, we manage the pack, it's kind of a high touch. We don't call them, you know, they're leasing concierge. And, you know, you've got a visitor, we'll help them figure out parking for the weekend. So there, we start to derive economy of scale when we're neighboring another building. And so then we can share building engineering. We can't afford to keep a cleaning person in one building. They clean about 30 hours a week in a building. So there's benefits, actually, of how we operate these buildings. And Stacy called us first, so.
So Burlington Station and Quincy Station.
You have to go to the podium, sir?
Yeah.
Burlington Station is in Downers Grove, Quincy Station's in Westmont. They're probably as close or closer than here to Itasca. They're similar.
The Fairview Stop is in the middle of those two, but the point is, is that we find economies of scale managing these assets close to one another. And the same is true for Lilac Station and Glenwood Station. One's in Lombard, one's in Glen Allen. We're just running out of train lines. This is the last one for us. I mean, Itasca, and then, you know, and we're getting love letters from some of these other communities, and I don't know why I say that, other than, you know, to go back to the sense of love already. I mean, we're hoping today goes well, because it's fitting. It's fitting in our vision of how Itasca Station comes out of the ground. We've got about a year that we would have there, we could actually start the pre-leasing for Wooddale and draw out of Itasca. And we've seen that in the Quincy Station and Burlington Station. So, yeah, come on up. And Mike Doyle would be the project manager.
Yeah, I think one other thing to mention with the other project down the road, we, that was something internally we thought a lot about. We spoke to Tracy Cross, our market study consultant, and really, this unit mix that you see on the plan for Wooddale, it was very intentionally created to complement the project down the street, so they're not in direct competition with one another. And so they really, you know, they live and breathe and kind of help one another out. If we don't have something for you here, you know, you can go down the street, we have a unit for you there that could work.
Great.
Any other questions? Alderman Woods?
Yeah, I just want to close on my request. All the concerns that you brought up about working with other communities, you can see everybody here, if you had a plan and an elevation, we would vote it in today.
Okay.
Right? So on our side, there's nothing going to slow it down. Staff has worked through three different versions of what this building would be, and already know all the anxieties, all the shortcomings of the site that should help to accelerate that whole process. I'm assuming that you guys sat down and talked about what was written on this piece of paper and the timeline to get to the RDA and the PSA? So, and also even the memo of understanding allows for an extension. So I have no problem giving you an extension, as long as these are parallel. This is almost like, in my mind, sleepytime. If you have extra time, you will take it. While you're excited and we're excited, I want to keep moving till we get to that point where the rubber meets the road, right? It's not going to start being built tomorrow, but the agreement will get done, the design will get done, right? And collectively as a team, the council, the staff, and yourselves will work to get this done. So if you don't mind, I would make a motion to approve and have the MOU parallel the timeframe of the approval of the RDA, allowing them for an extension, as long as everybody's moving forward. I don't care, I just hate to have that empty time sitting there, because people tend to use it, in business, anywhere. In construction, absolutely.
That is your motion?
Second.
Second. Okay, can we have a roll call? Attorney Bond, go ahead.
Yeah, if I would perhaps suggest, I think you mentioned it in your, in the motion, so that the minute taker can do it, and I can prepare the necessary documents for next week, would that be, so it would be, term would be through December 31st, 2024, subject to extension by agreement of the parties?
Yes.
Okay. Now, one note. Go ahead.
And I promise to find your sister or cousin on another day.
Careful what you promise. You're under oath. No, I think that that's reasonable, and particularly that there's an opportunity to come, if we needed more time, there would be a logical explanation for it, and I think this gives us great comfort to get going. So I think.
As I say, this is a unique situation in that we've already vetted that site out three times.
Oh, yeah. And some of the plans and the consultant, their output still exists. The traffic study, for example, we may be able to work with that existing traffic study and kind of hammer on it to match it. So I, and I saw Mike nod, and it.
I saw everybody nod.
Okay.
Sometimes they say, "I see things."
Okay. So let's have a roll call on this one.
Alderman, pardon me. Alderman Art Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Sismarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Currielli?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Ames?
Yes.
Alderman Artie Woods?
Yes.
And Alderman Catalano?
Yes, motion carries. Okay. Next is lot consolidation at 333 East Potter Street. Director Springer, did you have a little?
I do have a short presentation. Okay, so, so this is regarding a lot consolidation request for the property at 333 East Potter Street. The lot itself is located west of Ash, north of Potter, which is, of course, south of Irving Park Road. The lot itself is, the property itself is all under common ownership, but there are two parcels, side by side. And the two lots will be consolidated into a single lot. The west side of the property currently has a single-story building, and the east side of the property has a screening fence around it. And the east property is currently vacant. Oops. So upon combination of these two lots into a single lot, it actually brings the property into conformance with the provisions of the UDO. So we've put here what the standards are for the C3 district, and each parcel individually doesn't meet the standards for lot width, depth, and lot size. But once combined, they will meet or exceed all of those requirements. And so actually, combining them brings them into conformance with the code, and is a good thing. The property owner wishes to consolidate and then construct a driveway from the front to the rear, and a little bit of parking in this area. They would have to apply for building permits and, of course, comply with all of the city's codes. This does not require, lot consolidations do not require CDC recommendation or approval or review. This goes straight to city council. And so staff is recommending a few conditions, and the first is that they remove all the unpermitted gravel, and they restore it to its prior condition. Basically, grass will be planted wherever there's dirt and wherever the, you know, gravel is being removed. The vehicles have to all be parked on a hard surface, such as asphalt, concrete, or pavers. That's required by the UDO. And the third is that they have to obtain a building permit and comply with all city codes. And so that concludes my presentation.
Okay. Alderman Woods?
Yeah, so all areas, remove the unpermitted gravel, but they're going to actually build the lot, right?
Correct.
Okay. So all you're really saying is, there can't be any gravelled areas. It sounds like we're punishing them first, make, get the grass growing, and then put the parking lot in.
There's gravel kind of throughout, and so the idea is to clear it all out. Put your, you know, your paved areas in, and then c and sod all the rest, c to sod.
Alderman Jacob?
Yeah, so as you know, I mean, Potter Street has been a big topic for Alderman Messina and myself with the residents. and myself, with the residents over there. What type of business is, is the business itself, and what do they do there?
I'm going to ask Dominic Lanzito, he is an attorney representing the owner, and he can answer that question.
So Alderman, thank you for your question. This particular property is not going to be an active business. So the gentleman who owns the lots, or is the managing member of the LLC that owns the lots, is simply having storage for his collector cars. I can assure you that he will not park his cars on an unapproved surface, and he intends on, I think he has about 16 to 20 collector cars of very high value. So that the storage, not enough to have at one's home, that's what this will be used for, there's not going to be a high traffic volume, there's not going to be a lot of cars coming in and out, this is simply for his own personal use.
Go ahead, follow up?
Yeah, so I guess part of the problem we had before, I just want to make sure this isn't what's going to happen, is, you know, we had an auto repair shop that, they were always working on cars, and there was just cars parked everywhere on the street, just, I mean, they were just parked everywhere, and we had nothing but problems with the residents, residents were calling us nonstop about what was going on there. So I just want to make sure this isn't going to turn into an auto shop where-
And if I can give a little background about Jordan, he is not going to be personally working on any of these automobiles, he was involved in a tragic accident, he does not have arms at either shoulder. It was electrocution, both arms were blown off during the course of that accident. He's a collector car, he actually drives, so this is going to be more of, I don't want to say a car show, inside of his own personal garage, but more or less that. So this will not be a mechanic shop, will not need a triple base, and he's not going to be maintaining these automobiles, most of the automobiles have to be serviced at specialty shops.
Alderman Messina?
Yeah, I'm familiar with the empty lot, right? What kind of screening will he have, or will the property have on that empty lot facing the street?
And, thank you, I'm sorry, what was your question? So, there's a couple issues. He will have a six-foot privacy fence, but more importantly, what we ran into is, when he wanted to put something on there, because there's no accessory, there's no primary structure, anything was deemed an accessory structure without a primary structure. So by combining it, not only will we bring it to conformance, the only opening will be a slight driveway with a solid six-foot fence. It'll be a privacy fence of new construction, if there's a material needing to be chosen, we would prefer something with some security safeguards to it.
Follow up?
Yeah, so as far as use goes, obviously, we hope, you know, the tenant's there a long time, but if that use changes, can we put a provision that restricts him of stuff? I mean, this sounds great for this use, I'm just a little bit more concerned that if there's turnover and tenants, like, what?
So this approval really just is for consolidation.
Yeah, okay.
Zoning would have to govern the future uses that go in there, and those were updated with the UDO.
Got it, okay. Alderman Woods?
Yeah, to Alderman's point, so if they're not going to build it out to fix cars, when they leave, somebody else would actually have to come in.
And go through CDC.
And go through the zoning process to get the triple base, and to get the lifts in there, to get, not sink, but triple basin, that stuff done. So that would be our safeguard.
Correct.
Now, you said lifts, there may be storage lifts of collector cars, but I just want to make sure that we're clear. I'm not misrepresenting anything, it's just so you can put cars under cars.
Yep. Go ahead, Alderman Woods?
I'll make a motion to approve the lot consolidation.
Second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, for your time.
Okay, items to consider at future meetings, we have Wooddale Park District Annexation, Special Use, and Lot Consolidation, coming up June 13th. And next is 332 Benson Fence Variation, that's June 13th also. And we have Shorty's Facade Improvement Grant Agreement, that's also coming up, June 13th. And last is the Scope of Work for Community Parks, so everybody make sure you hear June 13th, because we have a busy schedule. And there's any other items to consider? If there are none, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
One in favor?
Aye.
Adjourn, thank you.
Okay, call the Public Works Committee of Order, let the minute taker note, the same people are present, make a motion to approve the minutes from April 25th, 2024.
Second.
Any questions, comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Number one, approval of proposal from Chemwise Ecological Pest Management for the rat mitigation program, and an amount not to exceed, oops, $5,650 for fiscal year 2025. And that'll be my motion.
Second.
And I know Director Lang said he did want to speak on these things a little bit.
Thank you, Chairman, yeah, just since it's a new program, in response to some concerns we've gotten from residents along the Irving Park corridor, in regard to some increased rat activity, we're deciding to take a proactive approach to mitigation, kind of a multi-pronged approach. First, we're going to enhance PMI enforcement through the area for weeds and garbage, and not give them a place to harbor any mice or rats. Secondly, we're going to do active bait stations along the corridor within the public right-of-way. There'll also be a cost-share aspect with residents, similar to the SCUNK program. And lastly, further enforcement, coordination with community development for businesses along that corridor, to make sure that they're having their pest management programs in place, as well as required by their commercial occupancy permit.
Okay, my, my first question, and actually, kind of a comment, is, as I looked at some of these pictures, I'm not sure how some of these alleys look like this, but I mean, and one, we got a mattress laying against a fence, did nobody in the city not notice that? I mean, we just allow that, I mean, this looks worse than the city of Chicago, some of these pictures I'm seeing. Do we have our PMI, do we have them drive these alleys? I mean, is anyone checking these alleys? Public Works, somebody?
Yeah, unfortunately, dumping is a regular occurrence back there, typically, we'll wait for a call from PMI, but, you know, as I said, with the program, we want to enhance that, that property maintenance aspect with regular inspections of the alleyway.
Okay, I mean, I would be pretty adamant that PMI drive through these alleys on occasion, because some of these pictures just look, like I said, they look worse than some of the neighborhoods I've seen in the city of Chicago, and I could see why there's rats there. The second thing, question I would have, is street sweeping, I don't know if communities normally sweep their alleys. To me, if the alley's swept, I mean, it'll be cleaner, and maybe some of the debris will be removed, is that something currently done, or is it something we can do?
They're not currently being swept, but I see no reason why they can't be, so I will reach out to our contractor to see if they can add those alleyways.
Okay, that's all the comments I had.
What, every alley swept?
Alderman Ames?
Yeah, so for the $5,650, is that money for if people participate to cost share, or is the city actually putting the bait houses, or whatever those are called, out?
Director Lang?
That would cover both. For the initial setup of the bait station, I think it was about $1,200 for the initial setup, and then $300 a month for routine inspection, or filling the traps after that. And then there's also enough funds in there to sponsor like 15, 12 to 15 bait stations for private properties.
Continue.
So how will, if this gets approved and everything goes through, how will people know about this program? What's the plan to advertise this?
We'll put it out through our regular media channels, in the newsletter, social media, you know, anywhere we can advertise it, possibly targeted letters to residents along that corridor.
Continue.
So, I mean, I've driven down this, and it does look bad, and it seems like, I don't know if some of these dumpsters are just not getting emptied, do we know that, or is there a way through PMI that we can check to make sure that they have a current garbage service that's actually picking up garbage regularly, because it looks terrible all the time?
Sure, so they're required to contract out their own garbage if they have a dumpster, if you're a commercial business. Also, if you're a food serving business, you're required by the health department to have pest management measures in place. So as I mentioned, there's going to be, you know, coordination between Public Works, PMI, and community development, to make sure that those things are actually taking place, as they should be.
Yeah, that's much needed back there, so thank you for looking into this, I appreciate it.
Alderman Sismarsky?
Yeah, just so you know, some of those pictures are old pictures that we have already brought to your attention. We have tried to catch them with cameras back there, and I appreciate you finally getting this to come to the table, because I've been pushing for this for a while.
And I think, I think the street sweeping will help a little bit too back there.
Rats like a clean street. They'll enjoy it.
One other question I did have, so I know Alderman Messina, I have had some complaints, like with Potter Street, with all the businesses there with the back, will this program be done back there? I mean, I don't see it on this, because isn't some of that REsment in the back by the train tracks, or is that all Metro Esment? Or would we need permission from the owners of those properties to do something?
So are you referring to Potter Street, south of the tracks, right?
Yeah, the ones-
The alleyway north of Irving?
Yeah.
Yeah, so there is issue with the properties dumping back there, or even encroaching onto Metro right-of-way, but that's, that's not the city's right-of-way back there, it's actually Metro's. But I believe we have coordinated with Metro in the past to send letters to those properties, and try to get them into compliance.
Got such a question for the attorney, could we require those people to participate in the program?
No.
You cannot? Okay, is there anything we could do to encourage them? I mean, we're giving them the opportunity to, you know, pay for part of it for them.
Yeah, and beyond that, you know, unless you offered it to them at no cost, then you might get some participation, but we can't, we can't compel the private property owners to avail themselves of certain services the city provides.
And then as far as the Metro Esment, I mean, do you think Metro, I know Metro's hard to deal with, but would Metro maybe allow us to put them back there on their Esment?
I would be surprised, we've had attempts to get a maintenance agreement with Metro.
I remember that.
Director Lang has been very successful in getting their attention, which is not easy to do, and we've had better success with it. But, you know, having them agree to that, certainly, I assume he could reach out to them, but that, they may not be inclined to want to participate, because it doesn't affect what they use the property for, unfortunately.
I don't think there's so much concern with rats as they are garbage and fences encroaching onto their right-of-way.
Okay, okay. Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Art Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Currielli?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Sismarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Ames?
Yes.
Alderman Art Woods?
Yes.
And Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
That passes. Next, approval of professional services agreement between the city of Wooddale and Robinson Engineering for the fiscal year 2025 Industrial Pretreatment Program, and an amount not to exceed $194,250, that'll be my motion.
Second.
Any questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Art Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Currielli?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Sismarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Ames?
Yes.
Alderman Art Woods?
Yes.
And Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
That passes. Next, approval of a professional services agreement between the city of Wooddale and Great Lakes Urban Forestry Incorporated for the Tree Inventory Project, and an amount not to exceed $25,173, that'll be my motion.
Second.
Director Lang?
Thank you, Chairman, I really just want to commend our Assistant Director Patrick Hastings, who applied for and received this grant for us. This has been a wish list item of ours in Public Works for a while, and he's finally gotten done for us. This will include a full assessment of all the trees within the public right-of-way, their species, you know, their approximate size, as well as, you know, a recommendation for maintenance, if any be needed. It's really going to help us get a better understanding of our tree infrastructure, identify areas where we can plant new trees, and help us better target our preventative maintenance measures. So I just want to, if you see Patrick's, tell him, good job.
All right.
One question I have is, I know on occasion, we all get phone calls about dead trees on private property, would they be able at least just mention to us, hey, by the way, you know, at such and such an address, there's a dead tree that should be taken care of? Or would they-
If they happen to notice it, they might. We've been enforcing those through PMI, since they're on private property, and there's a liability aspect to it. If somebody does contact, if they have a concern about a dead tree on their neighbor's property that might be posing a risk to their, their property, we will send out an arborist to inspect the tree, whatever way they can, and make an assessment for PMI to enforce.
Okay, like I said, I, most of the Aldermen get phone calls about the dead trees, but just thought if they're already looking around, if they should happen to see one, but, okay, with no other question, it's, roll call, please.
Alderman Art Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Currielli?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Sismarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Ames?
Yes.
Alderman Art Woods?
Yes.
And Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
That passes. Items to be considered at future meetings, fiscal year 2025 salt purchase, June 13th, Spruce Road Sidewalk, June 13th, Bensonville Park District IGA for sidewalk installation, June 13th, ordinance changes for stormwater, Wooddale for Greener Tomorrow Subcommittee Merge, June 13th, tree ordinance amendments, June 13th, North Plant Aspirator Pump Replacement, June 13th. Anything else? We're going to have a pretty busy June 13th. Okay, with that, I would make a motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.
Spruce side. Thank you. Just a moment. Thank you. Bye.